Better at doing pickup patrol each day. We get better at making certain that we're more efficient and effective in how we do things. So, you know, I appreciate everyone's patience as we continue to adapt and to change. You know, just it's there is a, I think, changes for everyone in the community as well, just with even masks and things of that nature at athletic events. So we really thank you, everyone, for doing your best, I think, to make certain that we're all putting our best foot forward to stay safe, to be considerate of others and their safety. And I really appreciate the fact, I think, the camaraderie that I've seen amongst people as I just view people at the field or throughout the building, because people have a very good attitude about moving forward. And above all, the learners in our district that I walk through schools, almost every school, every single day, and just the smiles and the conversations. It's just wonderful to have our students here, and I know that they appreciate being here. And those who are remote as well are, you know, are many are being able to engage in our actual programming, and it's just really exciting to see all that's going on. And our teachers have done a great job. Our staff has done a great job. And like I said, nothing is ever easy, but we're, we're doing things together here in a good, really positive way. The other things that are kind of going on that maybe we haven't really talked about or addressed at all are some things that really aren't COVID-19 related. And so I, you know, want to congratulate the 24 individuals who were in the Leadership Academy last year. We will have some time. I know I'm working with Keane State to kind of a graduation-like ceremony for them. We started off with about 30, 31 individuals. We took at least one or two courses, but 24 finished all five, the five-course sequence. That meant they did that in one year. Fifteen college credits like that in one year is pretty intense. So we have just started our second leadership cohort, which has about a dozen individuals. And this cohort is going to do it over a two-year period of time. Books, for instance, for this first class, they started this past Thursday. Talk about school culture, committing to culture, and then what we're all dealing with all the time is change. And so reports were that the first session went very well, and people are excited about moving forward with that. So conversations, we haven't talked about this for a little while. There's been, because there's been a lot of adjustment with even the colleges in the area. We continue to have discussions with partnerships, about partnerships or more robust partnerships with Franklin Pierce University and other surrounding organizations in Jeffrey and Ridge in order to improve the educational system that we have. So that's my report for tonight, and you'll be hearing from me a little bit later on about some other items that we want to discuss regarding transitions and thresholds and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Does any board member have a question or anything for Ruben? Nope. Okay, great. Moving on. Thanks, Ruben. So we're onto the consent agenda. So if anyone has a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, thank you, Heidi.
Charlie.
Charlie, thank you for a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
Marcy, can we just make sure the, our camp gets donation that we can make sure that they do give to the National Community Hospital?
Yes, yes, that would be great. And that is wonderful. It's nice having that little partnership. Okay, thanks, Nick. All right, now we're up for discussion. So we have the decision-making matrix in regards to the COVID-19 and the data.
Okay, I think I'll stand because the screen's pretty small. Yeah. Make sure that I'm visible on Zoom. So, I mean, this has been up for a while, so people have had an opportunity to peruse it. You go to the New Hampshire DPHS site, there's another version of several of these slides that I have up here. We've personalized it for the Jeffrey Ridge School District in our reopening framework. We'll talk about what the differences in the similar areas are. There are, of course, more similarities than there are differences. But certainly, as we go through the course of this year, though, it would seem that the community levels or the levels within our community of COVID remain low. We know that at any point in time, things could shift, and we want to be ready for those shifts if they were to occur. And so in looking and trying to find the right threshold or transitioning decision-making matrix, we wanted to make certain that we looked at a variety of factors and not just one or two things. We didn't want to look at just what's going on in the school or what's going on in the classroom, or what's going on in another community. We wanted to be able to see what's happening with our community, what are the patterns, what are, what's the movement, because, you know, that's what we did back in the, in the springtime when we went fully remote. We saw the trends that were taking place. We knew they were going to hit our way. Indeed, it did happen a little bit more in our area, but certainly throughout the state we had that spike. We'd like to believe, and we believe that we're doing a lot of mitigation against this, wearing the masks, doing a variety about social distancing and so forth, cleaning, that we can minimize the whole COVID epidemic in this area. But again, could happen, and so we want to make sure that we're ready to be able to clearly communicate how we're going to move to remote and come back into in-person and when that will happen and so forth. So that's what this presentation is about. I know it's discussion tonight, we always bring it to discussions, but certainly we've had conversations about this even from the beginning of accepting the framework, saying that DPHS was going to be the ones working with us in order to make these, help us make these transitions. That's still the case. In the end, I'll preface this entire presentation with, in the end, we'll be in contact with DPHS, and if they give us guidance that is a little bit different than this, saying, you know what, instead of closing down a school, you should close it down a grade level, or instead of closing down your district, you need to close down these two schools, that might be, we'll take that in consideration and be able to communicate why, why we would do that. So the recommendation, if we go to the next slide. Really, this recommendation came out in early September. So again, things keep on changing. It's not, it wouldn't be on my computer.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's on a different computer. But I'll, I'll talk about the first slide. The first slide really talks about that, the fact that recently, at the beginning of this month, New Hampshire DPHS, Department of Public Health, came up with this threshold approach to making decisions regarding schools in the state of New Hampshire. It's a suggestion, schools don't have to adopt this, but there may be other thresholds that they've already adopted. But this one makes a lot of sense. We've been tying a lot of our guidance to this organization, and because they did do a thorough job and have all the data systems available online so that we can get the accurate information every single day, we've gone with this one. So I believe you see this presentation on line, so I'll just go with what I have right here on the paper version. I don't need to stand up and stuff. So the first, if we can go to the determined level of community transmission. The first part is of this is, and I say decision-making matrix, there's actually several matrices, several charts that have information. And the first one here is the community transmission. And you can read it there, but it basically summarizes what they're considering minimal level of community transmission, moderate and substantial. And so you can read to the left of that chart in the gray areas, basically looking at number of positive cases in a seven-day average, new infections per 100,000 over a 14-day period, and new hospitalizations per 100,000 people over a 14-day period. All that data is given to us, we can find that. Cheshire County is our community, so when we talk about community transmission, if you were to go onto the site, you'd see this state of New Hampshire, and we'll be blocked off into different communities or different counties. And so we're in the area of Cheshire County, and Cheshire County right now are fortunate, this has very few cases. But again, certainly that can change, but that's what we, for our decision-making process here, I'm suggesting that we utilize Cheshire County as our community. You could argue that we use Jeffrey and Ridge only. It's harder to actually get the data just for a couple towns. We'd have to do some work there. But also, the reason why I would suggest against that is because people travel in this, in this area and throughout the community, and so it makes sense that, you know, we would use that. The next slide, determining level of school impact. Again, the matrix here, see if I have this. with the definitions, just like they have for the community impact, you have the school level impact. And the language is a little bit different. They use low, medium, and high instead of, you know, substantial and so forth. It's the same. And so we were talking about transmission within the school facility. Student absenteeism is data that we would want to report out, student absenteeism due to illness. That's important to note, that it's not student absenteeism due to positive COVID cases or even necessarily suspected, or cases that we have to act on, that we have to send individuals to go get testing and so forth just because of symptoms. It's illness, and so we're looking at all illness. So COVID has so many features of other types of illnesses, so we're talking, we're lumping all illness together. And so tracking that at the end of every single day. And then staff, staff capacity to conduct classes and school operations. So you have students, right, student absenteeism, but you also are talking about staff capacity. And so if you, for instance, let's say we have a situation where we have three teachers out, and we're able to get two substitutes, and maybe an administrator or someone else can come in and support, maybe piece together some other substitutes in that area, we'd consider that to be strained, not necessarily critical. Critical would be, all right, we have all these people out, we don't have the ability to fill those roles. Listen, at that point in time, it's critical. We're at a high level of school impact, and we need to, we need to make decisions based upon that. So with any of these, we're looking at if you have any one of these situations, let's say medium. All right, we don't have any clusters in the school, we have fewer than 15% of student absenteeism due to illness, right? Those are in the low category. But if we have a strained situation with our faculty, then we automatically jump into the medium. If we end up having, for whatever reason, you know, let's say, I don't know how this would necessarily take place, but if we were low in a couple categories and then we were critical in another area, or hey, our, we have, all our staff is here, we don't have any cases of any kind, but we've got like 35% of our population within the school is ill and out due to illness. There are implications with that, with how much time people have to have off for testing and all this, all that. It's, we're in a situation where regardless of the fact that we don't have, we're not high in the area of transmission, and we're not high in the area of staff capacity, we would nonetheless still be in that high category. That's how you, that's how you utilize that piece of the information. So everything we've done here so far, and I showed you, is simply straight from New Hampshire DPHS. This right here on the bottom just says, all right, now we would, on our school website, put a location where we would say, we report out every single day. Or at zero, we're at zero or zero, and we'd have to find out what the student absenteeism due to illness was at that point in time, around the two or three o'clock timeframe in the afternoon, and then find out whether we're normal, strained, or critical moving forward. And so that would have to be reported out. We then go to the decision-making matrix, and this is where it gets a little more, a little different. Not much different, to be honest with you, but if you were to go onto the site with this original decision-making matrix right here, you would see that there would be three categories instead of two categories. And what I mean by category is, I mean, we're using our hybrid that's outlined in the framework and the supporting documents, and then also the other option that we have is remote. We're suggesting that we don't actually have a fully in-person model five days a week right now. We would say that when, you know, the health crisis is over, that would be where we would go to. So we don't really need a decision-making matrix for that piece right here. That will be a lot of conversation with this group right here of board members, of community, and certainly the state. But we have two situations, whereas the New Hampshire document shows that these three right here would end up being in-person. And then this diagonal right here, from the upper right-hand corner to the lower left-hand corner there, from substantial to high, that would end up being hybrid. And then these other three right here would be remote. So in discussing with a couple groups, administrators, nurses, and so forth, trying to reason as to what makes sense, it would make sense that we're, for the most part, we're 80% in-person if, for those of people who chose that, that methodology, that yes, we would agree with the state and choose to make those in-person or those that are hybrid when things are low or in those moderate ranges. We, at the middle, would agree with the state about keeping it a hybrid during moderate if, if we're both, the level of community transmission is moderate and the level of school impact is medium, that we would continue with that hybrid with the caveat that it depends on the level of transmission in the school. We might have to, for instance, close, go remote in one school, or two schools, or part of the district. It wouldn't necessarily be an entire district decision. But if we're talking about the school impact and then the level of community transition, we figure that anytime we're at that high or substantial zone in either of those areas, we would need to go into a fully remote fashion for that particular school. If it's community, then it's in your, in that substantial zone in the community, that would mean you're really talking about it being substantial for your, your entire district. So you go, you could have schools that have high levels and other schools that just have no levels whatsoever. And so we'd have to play that by, not by ear necessarily, but by looking at all the data. And if we go decision-making matrix by school, this is what we report out. So based upon all the calculations that are provided to us with our own data from our nurses and the front office about absenteeism, and also what we know about teacher and support staff attendance and capability of, you know, doing our hybrid process, and then also what we get from the state department that's updated regularly every day about all the information that we've shown earlier in these slides, it's all there, easy to find. It takes about 30 seconds, maybe a minute to get that information. We then, through this process, decide whether we're at minimal within the community transmission or moderate or strained, and once we're at low, medium, or high, we put the word minimal here, so we might have to shift that a little bit, but low, medium, and high for the school impact. And then based upon those two, this is the instructional method that would be going on inside that school. The last paragraph here, if any school's instruction method moves from the hybrid to remote, the superintendent will contact the administrative leadership, the school board, and the New Hampshire Department of Health Services to determine the next appropriate steps. NHDPS may elect to move a cohort in a school to remote rather than entire school. That's what I had mentioned earlier, that they could take a look at us and say, with all their contact tracing and everything that they've done and all the information that they know, that we should make a different decision. But generally speaking, I don't, because this is so close to what their decision-making process will be, I don't necessarily see that being very likely.
Just a question about that.
Yeah.
So will this be, obviously, if you have a recommendation from NHDPS, you have to consider it very seriously, but will it still be the district's decision, or are you gonna, or are you telling us that under this model?
It's always, it's always the district's decision. But we do want to make sure that we're in contact with them and take the advice from the experts. Again, this whole model was developed, and it's very, very close. Actually, it's, our model moves us to remote faster than their model does. Their model would only have you moving to remote in those last, if you go back a few slides, couple slides, sorry, now a few, yeah, right there. Their model would only have it if you were moderate and high, or substantial and high. And we've said, no, we, I think with a little bit of thought, it makes very clear sense that you'd have to move to remote sooner than that.
Yeah, thank you. I have a reason I ask. We've seen that, you know, back in the spring, the state didn't seem particularly ready to give clear guidance.
Sure.
We could find ourselves in a situation where we're unsure about the state's guidance, and I think what you're saying is we would consider that strongly, but it would still be a local decision.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to, I don't, I don't, as long, I think that, because when you, if you were to adopt this, we would put it into the framework. By you adopting it and us putting it in the framework, it makes it policy. And so we'd have to follow policy now. We, so this is the discussion part, you know, do you want to have that wiggle room with the DPHS? And I, and I say wiggle room because some, there may be a situation that isn't somehow covered in this process that we just want to have a little more flexibility with. And I don't know what that would look like, but over these past few months have shown that there seems to be an unlimited number of those types of situations.
Things come up?
Yeah.
Like the, if the transportation company had an issue?
Yeah, well, and I would say that's, you know, it's not on here, but certainly if transportation had an issue, we suddenly have half the bus drivers, we'd have to definitely have some strong consideration for what we're going to do. You know, very likely, we'd have to, especially in the elementary schools anyway, we'd have to, by law, if we can't provide that type of transportation, we'd have to go remote for a period of time until we can figure that out. And then, you know, but our practice is also that we provide transportation for middle and high school as well, and though legally you don't have to provide the transportation for high school in the state of New Hampshire, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to consider what you want to do. But transportation, if, I don't know, food service, yeah, all those other, other types of.
Unknowns.
Unknowns, other considerations that we have to have.
But that would be, that would be true even if we didn't have COVID.
That is, that would be true.
You know, we need to, the power goes out for an indefinite amount of time in.
Sure.
December.
Well, right, power goes out for an indefinite amount of time, even, it's, it's not the same, but similar in concept. The towns do the roads, you know, with the plowing during the wintertime, and the sidewalks, the sidewalk machine breaks, they can't do the sidewalks, they've got two feet of snow that, yeah, it stopped five hours ago, but the sidewalks are still there. You can't, you have to, you know, you gotta, you gotta be careful with that. You don't want students walking in the road to school. So you'd have to make that adjustment regardless of whether everything else is functioning or not. So I know we have this under discussion, and it would be good to have, you know, some, some discussion, but also if.
That's the last slide, I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the last slide, I believe. Correct? Yeah, that was the last slide. Certainly, if the board would want to take action on this, we've been talking about this for a bit of time, it could do that as well.
So I have a question. So I heard you say that, you know, there'd be a chart like this on the website where it would say, you know, kind of like what level things were at, and then would determine whether or not, or it would inform whether or not we need to go remote. So you said something like, based on the data that you would receive around two o'clock or in that timeframe, but once we had all the data, it's the end of the day. So we'd look at that, we'd like adjust the chart, and then, I'm assuming, then it goes to, if, say we do have to close a school, or whatever, you know, absentee is off the chart or whatever. So then we'd go back to, also within the framework, because we have a communication protocols there, and it would say an all-call needs to go out, or something of that, so that it's not, we're not dependent on people being informed by going just to the website. There's also then these other protocols that would be placed, right?
It would be website, email, Facebook, all-call.
All-call, okay. I just want to make sure that that part was clear, the communication, that that aspect of the framework gets, kicks into action then.
Yeah.
And then the other one I was wondering about, and maybe you said it and I missed it, and maybe it was like weeks ago we talked about it, but my brain needs a reminder. The NHDPS, they're the ones who are responsible, or they're, they're going to do all the contact tracing stuff for us, right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so once, you know, say we have a student or a teacher that has a positive test, and the contact tracing, what's the kind of timeframe? Do we know that?
Well, once we find, I mean, actually, to be honest with you, they would find out sooner probably than I would find out, and they would contact us.
And tell us you have a positive test.
And then probably start asking us information about, you know, and they, they could, depending on the situation, it could be a very quick conversation about what needs to be done, or it could certainly be more complicated. But as the schools go, because we've, you know, we, if you have assigned seating, or, I mean, they're interested, they're, when they're contact tracing, they're interested in individuals who have been in close proximity, yeah, prolonged close proximity, in particular without these things on, these masks. So they may very well say mask or no mask if they've been. So they may very well say mask or no mask if they've been closer than six feet in proximity for 10 minutes or more, you know, then we need to do something about that in that area.
Contact those people.
Exactly, great.
Okay, all right. Those were the questions that I had. Other questions?
Yes, Ruben, you've just finished explaining the decision-making matrix, but I'm, you know, it's still a little bit hard to follow this last slide in particular. I don't know if you could do any more to, you know, help me understand exactly how this
Yeah. This last slide here is this, this last slide right here is based upon, the information that would be right here would be based upon the prior slide. So this, this low, medium, high, you know, all of this had moderate or low, but it's a lot to check, make sure that the language is correct. But if, what we would say is that we'd have the level of school impact, that's one of the items, and we're going to say, all right, it's, oops, okay, went out again.
Timing is everything.
Yep, that's fine. So it's low, we'd look at JGS, it's low. Okay, school impact at RMS, it's low. At JRMS and CHS, maybe it's moderate. And so that would be factored in there. Then you'd look at community impact, and you'd say, right now, everything's low, community impact wise. So you take the school impact of moderate, let's say for CHS, JRMS in that, in that situation, for moderate, and then the community impact in low, and where, where it intersects on that green and red matrix there, that is where the decision would be. For instance, medium level for school impact and minimal for community transmission would mean that we would be in our current steps. If we had a high level of school impact, so let's say that RMS, and we have still minimal community transmission, RMS would be going remote that next day, and then it may be further, but we would at least have that next day so that we could then take the time to continue the communication of what we want to be doing. And the contact tracing and everything else that we would need to do. So in theory, and or perhaps even likely, you could go, like Jaffrey grade school could be going to school, the middle high school could be going to the school in person, and the range could be remote. Before, I mean, if you go back to the earlier parts of the slides, some of the information to even get to, to whether it's low, medium, high, or minimal, moderate, or substantial, there's talks of kind of clusters. So a step prior to that last slide there might be that we have, let's say we have a cluster that breaks out in the school, DPHS will say this cluster needs to go and isolate or, you know, or maybe even quarantine, quarantine or isolate depending on whether they're positive or not.
Now, when they talk about the cluster, they're not just talking about those who got sick, but those who've been in contact with that?
It would be those who, through the contact tracing, would be involved. Yes. A three, usually a cluster of, is three or more.
Are there other questions from the board?
I think, obviously, this Patty, and it makes sense to me, I, I guess I look for more specificity in terms of the numbers, and I, I mean, but I don't know how many on a day-to-day, I don't know right now how many are in remote and how many are in school today, or not today, because it's Wednesday, never been remote, whatever. So I guess I, I would like better understanding of what the, the numbers are, less than 5% is, what are we talking, you know, is there a number?
Less than
I don't need it today, but I mean, we'll need to put the site together to help provide sort of context to the numbers so that we're not, it doesn't look
Right.
fuzzy, I don't know, it's just
I think one of the things to also to remember, Patty, is that we've given students the option of, is it quarterly or trimesterly to change?
Yeah.
So we also would need to keep that so that, you know, this trimester, these are how many students are remote, this is how many are face-to-face.
Right, and I, I guess I
Context there.
And I, so there's, there's that, I think, I think the website would be very important in the dashboard, the state of New Hampshire has a dashboard, I would really hope that our dashboard and their dashboard for our, for our specific schools is in sync. And I'm not sure that that would happen, given they're on a delay of a day, and ours it might be more in time than that. So there might be, to be a disclaimer, and parents would need to understand if they're going to the DHJ just site, that those numbers may not reflect our numbers, that our numbers are supersede those numbers. So that, you know, there's just so much data out there now that, which is great, but I also think that we will trip ourselves up and be confusing. I also wonder if, because we're spelling it out there, and because it will be very clear where we're at with numbers, that there, you know, a parent could say, you know, it's getting a little too hot for me, I know the regular date to move my child from in-person to remote is supposed to be at the end of the quarter, but I guess there must, there must be some release valve, some sort of pressure valve there, maybe? I don't know, I don't know how that would work, but I could see that more information, people might have more, want to have more options.
I would hope that our model would trigger it before someone felt the need, but someone could, yeah.
Yeah, well, again, this model moves, moves to remote faster than the sample DPHS model.
Sorry, Ruben, if you could say that again, please.
I said that this model, this proposed model would move us to remote faster or sooner than if we adopted the DPHS model.
Right, in that
In those two, two areas, yes.
And that's the grade, the second to last grade that you showed, the
Yeah, yeah.
The diagonal line.
All right, if the board doesn't have any other questions or comments, I think I'd like to open this so that we can take maybe questions or comments from the public about this. Let's see what people are thinking. So
So you're operating
So offering now a time, right, we, I mean, we had none at the beginning.
Okay.
This is, this is something people might want to
Yeah, and of course, as you just said, we are going to open up to public comments specific to this particular item. So if anybody would like to speak to this, you know, feel free to use one of the three methods that we had discussed earlier. Those would be, I'm just typing in the, the text number real quick, so 603-933-0973, you can text, you can use the chat feature, you know, type in your message, you can also use the, the option to raise your hand in the participants tab, again, if you do choose to make a comment in any three of those areas, please just say first, last name, and town of residence.
So I'm not seeing any chat or raised PMS.
I didn't get one text, just
You got a text, okay.
See, I'm going to just read it out?
Go, yeah, please.
Uh, this is Anne Mar.
Mar, yeah.
Anne Mar of Ridge. Just, when you are figuring out the percentage of students out for illness, are you also counting the students who are fully remote learners?
Uh, this, this model, when we're talking about in-person, we're talking about in-person learners.
All right, I'm not seeing anything in chat or raised PMS.
I, I can also, let me clarify that, because I, I maybe took the question differently. We're looking, when you're looking at going from in-person to remote, you look at the in-person learners, and you look at going back from remote to in-person, you're considering the opposite direction. So if you have, for instance, a lot of people who are ill and not connecting with the remote, that gives us information, yes or no, to move in the opposite direction. So I, I took the question as moving this direction.
In one direction, but it's a two-way. Okay.
All right, we did get one more chat comment.
Yeah.
Lydia Hatch, Lydia, could you just give me your town of residence at some point? So this is from Lydia Hatch from Ridge. Is there any tracking of remote learners in order to capture info of the student body in total?
There is, there is, they track remote learners, yep. I think another important thing is that if there is a remote learner, for instance, who is, who has tested, is ill and has positive for COVID, that's going to go into the system and start a whole process, and that's going to impact community transmission. That side of the matrix, that's why it's important, you got, it, it's the other side of the matrix, yeah.
Okay. I'm not seeing anything else. Are you?
Scan everything, one more scan real quick.
Yep.
No, haven't received anything yet.
Okay. All right. Then I think, again, rather than sit here and look at each other for the remaining time, we should just move on, so
Just to note, this, this was not the second public comment.
No, this isn't the second public comment, it was an opportunity, because this is something really
So there still is that second
There's still going to be another comment opportunity, yes, yes. Okay. So
So I would like to make a motion, we adopt this matrix, knowing that as on agenda tonight, as part of reopening a framework, that we modify it and adjust it as modifications and adjustments are needed, and the same would hold true with this. But I do think it's important that we establish a, at least an initial threshold and a decision matrix around that.
All right, so I have a motion to accept this as part of our framework, modifications as needed as things come to us. I need a second, one second. Thank you, Alicia. All right, all those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, go on.
I would be in favor of this with the exception of the last sentence on the last slide, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding it, but it, the way it's worded, NHDPS may elect to move a cohort in a school to remote rather than an entire school. I certainly would like to hear from NHDPS, but I think that the decision-maker should remain local, but I'm uncomfortable with that last sentence.
All right, can you suggest some language?
Sure. DPHS may suggest to move a cohort in a school to remote rather than entire school, however, the final decision
Make the recommendation to, something like that?
Yeah, make the recommendation to, however, the final decision is, shall be made at the district level.
Right, other board members, how are you feeling about that tweak?
I think that's important.
Okay.
So I'll amend the motion to include the amended wording.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries 6-0-0. All right, thanks very much. We're on to action items. So changes to the reopening framework other than what we've just done, and school board calendar.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, this is just another one of those changes that was made within the organization that we have been working with relative to from 14 days to 10 days. It's not a massive change. Nick, you had that highlighted, do you want to just kind of say a couple of words on it?
So there's a couple of spots that we just, again, changed minor spots, you know, the district has implemented a procedure for verification, you know, it said will. And then just adding that we use pickup patrol for tracking, but the main part is the section right here under health protocols when staff-student become ill. This is just based on some language from New Hampshire, DPHS previously said 14 days in these cases, now changed to 10. The graph later on has not yet been changed, but when we finalize these, that will be changed before we put it back up online and it's newly approved state if you guys choose to move forward.
And in doing so, we've had some comments that we like a clearer graph that would also include another portion of the framework that all, it already states it about travel outside of New England and so forth. So we'd be looking to just make the chart all inclusive and clear.
Okay, and was there one other change in this? I was thinking that there was something else, but it could be, I think it was
Oh, yes, there was one more thing. At the bottom, it, it looks really big.
Yeah, there we go, thank you.
It's, it's a rewriting of the section of food services, and what happened was, when we first wrote the framework, we wrote food services based on our current understanding. There have been some changes since then, and this has now been retooled to update what's currently happening. There was some additional information that Ruben had sent out a few days ago relative to some grant funding that we have received that gives additional above what's in the framework right now. But rather than writing something in and then taking it out, this is kind of our baseline, and then with the grant funding, that's an additional above and beyond the usual, which is down here.
Okay, great. Any questions on these changes? Nope. Okay, I think it's a good idea to get the flow chart so that it's more legible, understandable.
Well, understandable, the data's a little bit different and, and encompasses a few scenarios, not just the illness.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, great, great, all right. So action item, we need Okay, great, great. All right. So, uh, action item, we need a motion. John?
On what, do we accept the changes as presented?
Okay, thank you, John. Need a second? Heidi? Thank you. Discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and it passes 6-0-0. The next one is the school board calendar changes.
Yes, the finance, finance committee, what, uh, met, uh, last Friday, and there were a couple of changes to the, um, the school board calendar, uh, based on the budget development cycles that we discussed. The first one is to move, I gotta get it there. To move the meeting on the 12th, which is the budget and bond hearing, from the 12th to the 14th. And the reason for this is that the last date for petition warrant articles is the 12th, and if one of those, uh, petition warrant articles affects the, uh, budget or bonds, then we need to be able to address that in the hearing and post it. Uh, the other change is to change the meeting on the, uh, 19th from COIN to RMS, so that the snow date for, for the budget hearing and the, uh, actual board meeting are held at the same place.
Good idea. Thank you. All right.
So, ju- just a question. Charlie, is this calendar that we're looking at, is attached, is this the updated one or the old one?
The, the bottom number is correct on the updates, and then it'll be updated up top when we approve it. And then the location has been changed. I didn't highlight anything, but.
See, right there.
14th. And then there's the location.
The 14th I was wondering about, because it still says the 12 here this morning.
Yeah, that change will be made.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, need a motion?
I make a motion that we make the changes to the board schedule as noted in Charlie's report.
All right, thanks, Patty. I need a second. John, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, abstaining, carries 6-0-0. All right, committee updates. So, finance committee, do you have any update other than what you just did?
No, our meeting was rather short.
Okay. Thank you very much, then. And facilities, um, facilities committee was supposed to meet, and, um, we had people absent, uh, so there was no point in meeting. I know, you know, we're bad. Um, so we would have to reschedule that meeting. Um, but I think, I mean, we can report that we, um, have just signed a contract with.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, there's things that we've been reporting.
There's things happening.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, yeah, I was the only one who could attend. So.
Meeting away.
Uh, the meeting that I had by myself, um, was that we've, uh, we had already moved and approved going with the Turner Group for some architectural and engineering, uh, design work, and so, uh, we've had a couple of weeks there of hashing out the details, and that has come to a good spot. So, um, my, my office will be overseeing that, uh, implementation of, um, doing, there's several items that, um, within the district that they're going to be looking at, so we'll get started with that. So that's exciting. Some, I know there's a meeting, I believe, tomorrow, uh, about next steps having to do with the garage over here.
Mm-hmm.
So with the teachers and also, um, the facilities manager and, and I think our corporate works.
Excellent.
And, uh, there's an update, we've, we haven't talked much about it, but as a safety element, we've, we've been working on some items over at JGS regarding like a gate, um, so that the people don't drive through. We, we have closed off the gate on one side, so that certainly helps, but having a closing of a gate on the front end of the building so that during the school day, people aren't just driving through, that they have to have permission to, to enter, and that's, that's an important thing. Um, so it's still being worked on. There's companies that we're working with are a little delayed, but, um, we're moving forward with that. Um, I think, oh, I mean, a, a small, um, thing that, uh, is taking place, but I think significant over at the SAU, just, um, there are two safety, um, items that are happening there still. We're finalizing the double doors to separate the SAU from the rest of the school. The doors are there, there needs to be some glass and so forth put in there, and there's just temporary, um, elements there right now. Uh, and the alarm system will be set up once that happens. The other piece is that that front entrance area, which has a window, and you can kind of have some communication back and forth where the person's there. There's going to be a, a new window put in for the purpose of being able to, um, not only communicate, but pass things back and forth, so that people do not have to enter into, um.
Like the signing in and all that kind of stuff.
Right, they would, yeah, exactly. They don't have to, so.
Good.
We think that's, we think that's positive.
All right. Very good. Okay.
Can I ask, Ruben just made me put you on the spot in an unreasonable way, but I, I think the signing of the architectural contract is sort of a big step, um, certainly for the facilities committee, but hopefully for the school too, because we're looking at a whole range of issues, and, uh, I don't know if we have, uh, any of them we could surface, you know, for the benefit of the, the discussion, but, uh.
Yeah, I don't have the contract in front of me, and there was a whole list of things, but I can summarize. Uh, some would have to do with just the, um, operating systems within the schools, uh, to continue to look at those, that would have to be HVAC. Um, systems would be a significant piece of that, because we had already had, uh, kind of an engineer come in and, and give us end of life on a lot of our, um, a lot of our equipment. And so, then this would be the kind of next step there. Um, we would be looking at also the, like, I guess in summary, kind of the con, the concept of just modernizing, um, some areas within our buildings to make them pop a little bit better, um, in a, in a, a more, a fresher way, you know, so getting, getting it a little more modernized, a little more tasteful perhaps. Uh, bathrooms, right? Bathrooms are another big deal, just making sure. Yeah, it's a big one to make certain that, uh, we're up to speed with our bathrooms, making sure that we're, um, a school district that is very, um, provides, I guess I would say, you know, provides, uh, not only really the best type of, um, facility for, for our learners, but also in our, in our staff as well, that's another piece of it, but also that we are, um, providing, I think, uh, facilities that give people the most, um, privacy.
Yeah, that's creature comforts, too.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, just, uh, thank you for that summary, Ruben, because as you say, you don't have it in front of you, but I think you hit on the hotspots of a lot of important ones. But, but really, we are looking at the assets that are our district owns and trying to see where we can make changes that will make a difference without costing, uh, the taxpayers more than is reasonable. Uh, you know, we know we have schools that are aging, and we're trying to help them age gracefully and, uh, and, and take care of the asset and protect it. So it's a pretty big step forward, and, uh, a lot of work was done, definitely.
Yep. And, uh, I would say kudos also to Laurel, because I think she really took the lead on this particular project.
Absolutely.
Even though she's not here tonight.
So there's, there's this project and also some work that's continuing to be done. You know, maybe it's been a little, a little bit on the back burner, um, as of late, because, but, um, about fields, you know?
Yeah.
Making sure that we're improving the layout of our fields, um, the drainage of our fields, but also the usability, of course. Uh, that includes, you know, elementary fields as well as high school, middle school fields, as well as the cardinal courtyard, I guess we're calling it.
Yes.
That's.
Why not?
Didn't have a name before, it is, it is that now, um, to make sure that, uh, you know, we are offering more.
All right. Great, thanks. Um, public comments, number two.
All right, so I could get probably all the same people here as before, but we'll still just kind of give a quick ex- explanation again. Three ways to, uh, provide a comment. You can either text the, uh, number that's listed in the chat window, uh, 603-933-0973. You can use the chat window, or you can raise your hand through the participants tab. That's the one way that you can actually, you know, speak rather than send in a text-based uh, response. Uh, in any case, just please use your, uh, first name, last name, and your town of residence.
I'm seeing nothing.
I don't have anything right now.
All right. Um, well, then, let's move on to board matters. Any board matters, stuff?
I guess I would share that the, um, goals committee, um, has not met, but we are planning to meet October, uh, 22nd, I think. Um, it's a, we are out of sync with our plan, given, um, the strength of priorities and everyone's focused attention on opening a school safely. Um, but we, that is our number one goal at the moment, so we're doing the goal, whether we set the goal that way or not, but we will be meeting in October, so stand by.
Okay, all right. Also, I know, you know, again, we get all the emails from the New Hampshire School Board Association, and there's always webinars and things happening, so, uh, keep an eye on that. There is the delegate coming up, is it in January, I think?
Oh, in assembly, yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't know if anyone was interested in that, but we have plenty of time to think about it, but just want to put a bug in people's ears on that one.
I was just going to say that the wellness committee is meeting this coming Monday. We had had to also reschedule our, we have a meeting planned at the end of August, it was just too hard, but.
Yeah.
Everything going on.
A few other things.
For the first time this year on the Monday.
Okay, great, Monday. Very good.
Policy meeting tomorrow evening.
All right. Very good.
And I'm sorry, I'm just, oh, it's the 20th of October, I'm sorry.
20th, all right. Okay, very good. Um, well, we're still going to have some update on our technology. We, I mean, we had one a couple of weeks ago, but.
Yeah, just a quick update right now.
Okay.
We have just contracted with the Adam Group out of Portsmouth. It's a group that was, um, suggested or, um, by our insurance provider. Uh, and this is a group that's doing an audit of our privacy and security systems and all our policies and everything. They're doing quite an extensive audit, and, um, that will help us to, um, build and give us our recommendations.
Yeah.
And then that's something that we then are missing for our technology plan, and that will be put into the technology plan with action steps and so forth.
Great. All right, thank you.
Marcy, I forgot, also, the communications committee is meeting on the 29th, so that's coming up soon, so.
It's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, right? So we'll have, uh, an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
Lots of updates.
Lots of updates at the next one.
Yeah.
It'll all be happening. Okay, well, great. Then, um, I'll entertain a motion for German.
I will make that motion.
All right. Thank you so much, Robyn. John, you're seconding that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then, and we're done? Thanks all.